September 9th, 2014, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners Down Session.
Join me, pray would you please, Father, thank you, and then, Lord, thank you for all the love that you give us. Lord, we ask that you touch our hearts today, make us to, and guide us to be better. Lord, we ask that you be with us this board this morning, goes about conducting the business. Would lead us, guide us, and, Lord, we ask that you over our military, over our law enforcement, takes us, put their lives on the line daily, our protection. Lord, we ask this all in your precious name. Join me, Father.
Agents, the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, lives for liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to all, and I want to extend you a good, warm welcome to the September the 9th regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. If anyone in, anyone in the audience has any business before the board, we have a, not on the agenda, we have a public discussion at the end of the meeting. You recognize and you will be heard. By this time, anyone to the audience, does anyone in the audience have any questions concerning the consent agenda or the information package? Anyone in the audience? No one in the audience, then I will turn to the staff. Does anyone in the staff have any questions concerning the consent or information package?
Mr. Chairman, if I can respectfully request that you pull pages twenty, uh, twenty and twenty-one, uh, from the consent for discussion, uh, further, later in the meeting.
All right, well, you, uh, Mr. Attorney, direct us when you want.
I will do that, sir.
So, so, we're going through twenty and twenty-one. All right, okay, anyone else from the staff have any, uh, concerns? All right, now we'll turn to the board. Does anyone on the board have any concerns with the consent or the information package?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, pages eighteen and nineteen.
Pages eighteen and, okay?
The pay and classification study.
You want to discuss those now, or you want to? It's your call.
Um, we can discuss it now if you'd like, whatever the board prefers.
All right, anyone have any objection on board to discussion at night, well then, page eighteen, nineteen?
My, my question about the pay and classification study is, um, it's a $22,000 contract price, and I'm wondering, in this time where we're, we're under such a budget crunch, what exactly that we are, are trying to accomplish here with this pay and classification study? Um, we're, we're a small county, um, my question is if this, if this comes back, are we going to cut salaries if the pay comes back, saying that certain salaries should be cut? Um, I, I believe that a lot of this information can be obtained from back, the Florida Association of Counties, and I'm just wondering if, if this action can be, um, taken without going into a $22,000 contract?
Let's go over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the proposed pay and classification study, it was, uh, just pursuant to ordinance the county commission passed last April, and, and pursuant to it because you're, you're saying in ordinance that we will perform a pay and class study to determine the correct pay rates. And so, it'd be left up to them to come in and determine what the rate should be and for what we call external equity and internal equity, uh, in the pay rates. It's been several year, I think, 2007, since county done one. We were doing them every other year, and we were doing them with assistance from the Small County Technical Assistance Service Program, helping pay for those. And since 2007, the state had a problem with their budget, and they quit funding, grant monies for that, so we haven't had one since 2007. And so, but pursuant to ordinance back in April, I think on April 8th, you adopted one that, that said we would do one. This is the reason we went out and we, we solicited proposals, and we made this recommendation that this firm, Evergreen Solutions, would, would get a job. So, you know, could it be done a different way? We've been doing it a different way since 2007, uh, we haven't had the money in, and, but it's been a while, and we're just trying to get some equity up and in line. Um, if the numbers were to come back where, especially on the one end, if we were not in line, I don't know if we can get in line all at one time, but we can have a goal to be working toward to get in line, whether it be up or down. But it's, it's pursuant to ordinance you passed back in April.
Right.
May I?
Anything, anything else, Mr. Butler, Mr. Attorney, you have any? Okay, we'll go back here.
It just seems to me, as I said, we are a small county, we have not given, um, any raise to speak of to the employees, but we're going to spend $22,000 to have someone tell us whether our, whether we need to give a raise. And I believe that the money can be spent elsewhere, and we can examine the pay, I don't have an issue with that, and under the ordinance, I don't believe that it requires us to have an outside contractor perform the end classification study.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to postponing this either. I agree, it's budget crunch, we've, we've, we flew by the seat of our pants since '07 anyway, so.
Buy some more.
I'm not opposed. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not opposed of it either. Before we get through here, with this budget section we're doing, we're going to be looking for every single dollar. I'm not opposed to this either.
I'll, I'll make the motion to pull these pages and table this study.
I'll second, first of all, you want to include in there the recommendation for the rest of the agenda?
Yes.
Second stand.
All right, the motion is to pull and table. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
All right, got a second by. Jaeger, all right, there's anyone in the audience, any questions? Any further discussion? Board member? Yes, Mr. Smiley.
Mr. Jaeger said that includes the rest of the consent, what about pages twenty-one?
Other than the, what the attorney has, twenty and twenty-one, we're.
All right, for opposition, pushing past five and oh. I understand you will address.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay. Or, I'm gonna change the format just a touch, we have some young ladies with the library here today, and they have other commitments, and, uh, so, we're gonna let those, these young ladies go first, so, one of you or all of you, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter here, whoever wants to be the spokesperson, oh, you're the lucky one, come on, come on, come on. Thank you, if you would, please, give, uh, Ms. Roberts your name and, uh.
I'm Kathy.
And who you represent, you don't have to give that.
Okay, I'm Kathy Colbert, and I'm representing the Gulf County Public Libraries.
Okay, Ms. Colbert?
Good morning.
You have the floor.
Thank you, good morning. Um, I am Kathy Colbert, and I am here today as an opportunity to speak on behalf of the libraries both in Weewahichka and, of course, the library here. Before I begin, I would like first to thank you for your continuing support of our libraries. Because of you, we have been able to serve 16,492 patrons since January the 1st. We have been able to provide public computer use for 533 users since the beginning of the year. We have been able to welcome 291 students to our summer reading program, and we've been able to circulate 30,132 items through our doors since the beginning of the year. All of this because of your kind generosity. As the president of the Friends of the Library, I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you for allowing us to be able to serve our community. I had the privilege of teaching in Gulf County for 36 years, and my heart has always been with the children and the students of our county. So just allow me, please, to familiarize you with a few of the opportunities that we afford the children in this county. First, every Tuesday at 10:30 in our library, we provide a storytime for infants zero through 36 months. Now, that's a challenge, but it's the first time we've been able to do this in over a decade, and we are just thrilled that that's now back on our schedule of services. Every Tuesday in the month of June, we have a summer reading program that is growing by leaps and bounds, 291 students last year came. It's growing so large that we're looking at dividing it into two sessions this coming summer. We hope to share with them the discovery and the excitement that can be found between the pages of a book, and instilling them a love for the printed word. As part of the state's new core, common core curriculum, every fourth grader must be able to type an entire page within a given framework of time, and our computers will afford them the practice on the keyboarding that they may need to reach this goal. Also, the Sunshine State Readers are available for every child to download free of charge, either on their tablet, their Kindle, their computer, and yes, even afraid, their telephones. Our older students use the computers for research papers, science fair projects, accessing online databases, the Florida Electronic Library, as well as applying for job opportunities. I had the privilege not too long ago to sit with a student who filled out an application for McDonald's using the computers in the library. Along with you, meeting the needs of the children in Gulf County is a priority, and I know that it is for you, just as it is for all of us. And yes, this is the time of year where everyone is bending your ears for their need of your funding. The 25% reduction to our libraries represents a cut of $27,515. Now, that significantly impacts our book budget, it impacts our staff pay when we have the busy seasons, like when the snowbirds arrive, and of course, it will impact the programs that I just outlined for you. I know that as commissioners, you have a huge responsibility in deciding how each fund is allocated, and I know that you have to squeeze every dollar until Washington screams, I know that. And I believe that you do think through your decisions carefully, and I know that you want every dollar to be spent wisely. And as a taxpayer, I do appreciate that very much. As the final budget is being hammered out, I just ask that you remember the library, both in Weewahichka and the one here in Port St. Joe, as worthy of, of receiving your reconsideration. If there are any extra dollars that could come our way, I promise that they will simply be reinvested into the children and in the community that we love. Again, thank you so much for your continuing support of the library.
Thank you, Ms. Colbert. Good morning, good morning.
I'm having some problems with my asthma this morning, so you'll just have to bear with me. I would first of all, like to, my name is Dana Boyer. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Gulf County Public Library. I would like to introduce Robin Shader, who is a visitor today, she's the directory, the director of the Northwest Florida Regional Library System, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good, which a lot of people don't realize that our library is part of a system, and as a part of that system, we have access to, we can request something from Panama City, or Marianna, or Franklin County, which is, it's, it's a great asset. They also, what you may not realize, is that at the county, at, in their, in Robin's offices, they do the budgeting and the paperwork for the library, so we don't have to do that here. So that's, that's really a big asset also. Okay, Gulf County's come a long way since they adopted their comprehensive plan, you all know that. The plan gave us a way to balance all the different elements that make a community viable and helps them attract new businesses, new residents, and become a, just, the wonderful type community to achieve all our potential. A public library and all the planning data, I've been a part of the comprehensive planning process, all the data, at all the workshops I went to, whether in Tallahassee, whether Fort Walton Beach, whether Pensacola, identified a library as an essential component of a community. I mean, it's just, it's part of a community's culture. The county commissions in the past years have, up until now, have done a great job protecting many of Gulf County's assets. You can look, they kept the, the height restrictions down. Cape San Blas doesn't look like Panama City Beach, county commissioners did that. County commissioners kept Windmark Beach from being a gated community. They had plans to come here and fence off everything, and it was to be a gated community with no outside access. Now, we have a public park down there that residents and visitors both use, that was because of the county commissions. That's what your foresight can do for a community. The county commission has made sure that every community, no matter wealthy, poor, all economic levels, have great parks and recreation areas, you haven't just put one in the ritzy areas, you've done a great job with that. County commissions help determine the character of their county because they hold the budget in their hands, and I know that it's a really tough job. I want to speak to you about our library, I represent many voices that aren't here today. We wanted to do this in a positive way, we didn't want to be out front and call the news media and do all that. We truly have faith in you, that you will understand the importance of the library. You've heard Kathy Colbert's statistics, were you not impressed by how many books go out, how many people visit your library? Our library is now open four days a week rather than five days, and has cut their evening hours to days a week that they used to have, they used to be open in the evenings, now they have to close in the evenings and on Saturday. I've been privileged to be a part of a volunteer group with Ms. Barbara, and also with the Friends of the Library, that in the last three or four years, we've held fundraisers, and we raised over $10,000 for books, publications, books on tape, things that the county commission a few years back had to cut part of their budget. So we stepped up to the plate to help the county, and we held these fundraisers to make our county still have the assets that they needed. So we're not just asking for, I'm not just asking you to do something that I haven't worked on myself, I have, and it's been fun, and the community's been very rewarded. Questions have recently been asked about whether or not a library is viable in the digital age. A lot of people are saying, well, we have computers, we have eBooks, we can download anything off a computer. Well, not everybody has a computer. We have, I don't know what percentage of Gulf County has computers in their homes, but I suspect that quite a few of them don't. And as you know, you can apply for unemployment, all kind of different things on a computer. Those people go to the library now because they don't have computers at home, and the librarians show them how to use the computers to access the information they need. We can't be on the phone all the time, you can't be on the phone all the time helping them. Louis Herrera, City Librarian of San Francisco, was quoted in the New York Times, he stated, "Libraries are a place for personal growth and reinvention, a place for help in navigating the information age, a gathering place for civic and cultural engagement, and a trusted place for preserving culture." While the technology for accessing library materials has changed, we'll use computers. And we'll continue to change our mission to provide free, the library's mission to provide free and open access to information has not changed at all, just the method that they do it with. Remember, the state bases their funding on what you allocate. If, if the library is a priority for you, they make it a priority for them. What they give us two years down the road depends on what you give us now. I understand how difficult your job is, but please understand how important our library is to us. To have a viable, sustainable library, we need your help. Libraries are a place for personal growth and reinvention, a place for help in navigating the information age, a gathering place for civic and cultural engagement, and a trusted place for preserving culture. Our new librarian, Nancy Brockman, is already planning on wonderful expansions of the library's functions in the community. Please do not deny her that opportunity. And you know, I didn't address Weewah, I, I live at Bryant's Landing, so I use the Weewahichka Library also, and every time I go in there, there are so many people there, Mr. McDaniel, you know that, you know that, and their role for, for a small community like Weewahichka, to have the kind of library they do, a lot of people worked hard, I'm sure you were one of them, to make sure that they got that library, so please help us preserve what we have. We've already endured cutbacks, and we've tried to help you, please help us now, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we have a budget meeting tomorrow at 5:00, so I think everybody needs to take the passionate pleas and, and pay them as they can, and, and if we can find some dollars, I'm, I'm committed to find what we can to restore what we did to, uh, last year. Uh, I'm gonna look hard, and, hopefully we can find something tomorrow at the budget meeting.
Thank you.
I want to thank you ladies for coming, Ms. Colbert and, uh, Ms. Boyer. Very educational and, uh, very interesting, yeah, as to a lot of the facts there that probably I wasn't aware of. Uh, anyway, thank you again for coming, but we'll see, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon. All right?
Thank you very much.
Welcome, stay with us.
If we have the storytime, we need to go get ready.
All right, all right, all right, there you go, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait till they. Okay, all right, moving right along. Today, we're having the second public hearing on the five cent gas tax ordinance. Before I go to the public, I want to address the people of Weewahichka. We had our first public hearing two weeks ago. Two days later, I was approached, asked the question, if this gas tax passes, why is all the money going to St. Joe? I said, that's wrong. Folks twice about this. I said, that, if you listen to the meeting, if you watch it, three times in there, it plainly states, be distributed within municipalities and the county. It, it just galls me when some people will stoop to the bowels of the earth to create their false witness instead of just simply telling the truth, and the truth is, if this passes, it will be distributed, and I'll give you a breakdown. City of Weewahichka has 2,139 people, plus or minus, they would receive 13% of this, out of every dollar, they would get 13 cents. The city of Port St. Joe has 3,445 residents in the city of Port St. Joe, they would receive 21% of this, or 21 cents out of every dollar. So no, it, to the people of Weewahichka, it's not going to Port St. Joe, it will go to the county, to the municipalities on a scale that's already been set up, and it's based on population, but I want to clear that up, just for the record, just be truthful about it. That's all I've ever tried to be up here with the people. At this time, we're open to the public for the second public hearing on the five cent gas tax. Now, if any of you would like to, uh, make any comments or any, uh, questions on this, if you would, raise your hand, let me recognize you in order, you can come before and make your presentation. Anyone, anyone in the audience, on the five cents, come on up, sir.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Simmons comes up, if you, as a commissioner, want to waive the second reading, um, your notice calls for two public hearings, two readings, um, we can read it by title, or if you are comfortable waiving the reading of the title, that we can go right to the public.
All right, is any, any member not comfortable or want to?
I think we can proceed, I think all of us.
You're comfortable, good, thank you. All right, thank you. Attorney, proceed.
Tom Sims, 1730, County Route 386, Weewahichka, this is the third time I've been up. This is a bad ordinance. You're putting a hardship on low income, you're putting a hardship on people that, their income is only social security. Everything is going up, food is going up, taxes is going up, not your taxes, but it will if you pass this. The insurance, medicine, and if you're on a fixed income, uh, it hurts a little bit. We talk about Georgia and Alabama, that really has nothing to do with us, they have a, a state income tax that subsidizes their gasoline tax. There's no need to talk about the federal tax on gasoline, there's nothing we can do about it, the Fed set that. There's no need to talk about the state income, state tax that the state puts on gasoline because we can't do anything about it. But we can talk about the five cents that you're fixing to put on it, because if you do, it's all on you, and I do not think you need to do this in this time. Unemployment is down, it's not booming like it was years ago, people are hurting, and it does not need to be passed now. Maybe later on, when stuff comes back, if jobs comes back, it might be different, but right now, it should not be passed.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Got it, Dr. Hardman.
Pat Hardman, President Coastal Community Association. I would have the same argument, but in a different way. I think the gas tax should be passed because I think the ad valorem taxpayer, those with fixed incomes, are eating at all the cost of the county, and not just spreading it out. You have, we have, we've estimated, other day, that we had about, we'd go from about 800 to 1,000 people living out on the Cape, to 16,000 to 17,000 a day in the summer. Those people aren't paying a dime to help undercut, underwrite our cost of our roads and the things that going on. You're asking the ad valorem taxpayer to pay over and over and over again, it's very unfair, and we. It's very unfair, and we do not all have rich people paying taxes. People who are poor pay taxes too, and they can't afford for these taxes to go up. My understanding is, is that this money is set, and you should be able to figure out if that money comes in to help not raise that ad valorem taxes and balance that out so that we're having the people who are using the services help pay for the services. Realize that if you bought 1,000 gallons of gas over the year, that wouldn't be two packs of cigarettes. Wouldn't be a McDonald's and a French fry and a Coke. It is not talking about putting an adverse burden on individuals. It's taking some off and putting it on to everyone who uses these facilities. It should be passed, and it should be reflected in the budget to lower the other ad valorem taxes. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hardman.
I'll comment on that.
All right, anyone else?
Barbara Radcliffe, 210 South Palm Street. As I said two weeks ago, this is a double-dip thing. We're planning to raise the gas tax by 5 cents per gallon, and we're planning to raise the millage rate. So the taxpayers, the ad valorem taxpayers, are still being taxed. You know, you're gonna get us at the gas pump and get us on our property taxes. And the people who cannot afford this tax... I mean, bacon is almost $6 a pound. Milk is $3 a gallon. The water bills, utility bills, everything goes up. And Americans drive their cars. It's how we get to work. It's how we do everything we do. And the gas tax is just gonna hit the low-income, fixed-income people the hardest. So I agree with Mr. Sims. This is not the time for a gas tax. And that would like for you, as a commission, to reconsider it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else? We're closed to the audience. Michael Moore, you asked for the floor.
Yeah, the only thing I would bring out, you know, it hurts the low-income people, true. But it also hurts the small-business people. And where I'm going with that, if a small business has 10 or 11 vehicles out on the road every day, they gotta count that 10 or 11 times. So that may mean the issue of them hiring another employee, being able to hire another employee. That's my only comment, but we'll see where it goes. But I'm interested to see how this works out.
All right, sir. Is that all? Chairman, I guess I'll recognize the... I won't belabor it too long. I understand the arguments. Look, anytime you mention tax, people are against it. I think that we've been consistent, though, in the fact that when we do an alternative source of revenue, whether it have been the landfill fees that we started charging, whether it was a half-cent sales tax that the school board had that we kept in to fund the landfill, whatever those alternative sources of revenue have come in, we've reduced the ad valorem. I've said this before in a meeting. I want to say it again. We've reduced from six years ago, spending $13.7 million of property tax, down to 7.62 years ago. Now, we've had to go back up a couple of times over the last year or two because we hit rock bottom, and we still have to fund government services. We still have to fund the libraries. We still have to fund the Public Works. We still have to fund the sheriff's budget, and we're gonna have to continue doing that. This is an alternative source of revenue. I know it's a tax, and I know that's why it's controversial. At the end of the day, I'm interested to see how it's gonna play in. But we've already committed, and I want the board to understand, we've already committed 120,000 that we can of that tax go to the Public Works. We've committed that. It's to reduce ad valorem. It's to keep from going up too much on ad valorem. We're gonna have to increase ad valorem over the next few years. There's no question about it. Your gases is going up. Your insurance is going up. Your employee costs are going up. You're going to have to... We are one of the... There's 67 counties in Florida. Of the 67 counties, we're in the bottom third of where our ad valorem rate is at. There is only one other small county that I know of that has a lower ad valorem rate than we have, and that's Franklin County. And that's because they have the assessed values a little bit more than ours. But it's an alternative source of revenue. I'm not gonna belabor it too much. However, this board votes, I understand. You gotta vote your conscience. And you've heard the arguments for and against. But I think we've been consistent on finding alternative sources of revenue. If I could drop the ad valorem rate to zero and find alternative sources of revenue that spread that thing around where it wouldn't hurt everybody, that's what I would be for. We've been consistent with that. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to the other members.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other board member?
I would just like to comment. I agree with the comments that have been made about how the tax harms certain folks and businesses. And I also have a concern regarding the way, on the other side of it, the way that we would handle these tax dollars. And if I understand it correctly, and the money, the 120,000, has moved out of the Public Works budget in accounting for this 120 that's coming from the gas tax. Our Public Works, they do not perform the same functions that this tax, these tax dollars can cover, building roads. They don't do that type of work. So I believe that it hurts our Public Works Department, and I think that they are already strapped. Public Works provides the basic services that our citizens rely on. They can only get those services from the government, and that's what we need to focus on, is basic services. My other concern, and I don't know that this is the plan, but I have some concern that this stream of revenue may be pledged for a bond, another road bond. And we've had quite a few issues with the last road bond. Since I've been a commissioner on this board, I have tried to understand how the previous road bond was spent and what roads were improved or paved. And I've had quite a bit of difficulty getting that information. And that concerns me as well. I don't want to see this board put this county into further debt. So in my opinion, this 5-cent gas tax has issues from many different sides. And I, again, at the last meeting, I had made the motion that I would like for this board to not proceed with this gas tax. And I would like to renew that motion. I believe we can find the 120,000 to cut in the budget. I believe there's a lot of work to be done in that budget. So I would like to renew that motion, that this board not continue with the 5-cent gas tax.
Well, it's my understanding you're placing the motion to just continue or not proceed with the 5 cent.
Mr. Chairman, I would...
On the floor.
Yeah. I would second that motion again for discussion.
Commissioner Michael Moore for all discussion. On the other floor.
Okay. Everybody knows I've been against this 5 cents from day one, you know. And I truly have. My only issue, here's where it hurts me at. We set the millage a while back, you know. We can't go any higher than 6.99, 0.2 or whatever. We can't go any higher now. So we can't make up that 120,000 by raising the millage. So my question to Commissioner Bryan is, do you have an idea where we can trim that 120 yet? Because that's my only concern.
Yes, I think there's quite a few places in the budget. And in our budget meeting tomorrow, I believe there's quite a few places to cut. And I think we have more than 120,000 to cut. I believe we have funds that can be used for some of the items that we did not fund, that we've heard from folks in meetings since our last budget meeting that we can fund. I think we have some work to do on that budget.
Yeah, okay.
All right, you back here.
Yes, okay. It's really gonna be interesting now to see where you come up with your cuts at because, you know, we have the sheriff over here. We have to take care of the sheriff as much as possible for safety. He's trying to get new vehicles. You know, we have that to look at. We have countywide voting issues to look at. It's gonna be interesting. I'm gonna hold my second, though, because I don't support this 5 cents. I want it gone. But I hope you can really produce something tomorrow that we all like. My second stands.
Anyone in the audience before we take a vote here? I understand it must be a supermajority vote. You gotta carry the vote. We're gonna carry the vote anyway, so all right. At this time, we'll vote. Vote for the gas tax or against it? For the tax, Commissioner Michael Moore, you vote against? Tax, Commissioner Bryan, you vote against?
I vote for.
You vote for, and Chair will vote. 5-cent gas tax, killed. Property owners? Including myself. Get ready. Zip our pockets again. All right, that's good. That's good. Now then, let's move along. The second public hearing today is on the 1-cent tourist development tax ordinance. Mr. Ernie, do you have any, before we go to the audience?
Mr. Chairman, again, if the commission would like to waive the second reading as required by our notice, unless you'd like an introduction of it.
Anyone object to us waiving or not? Let's just waive it. Is that better? I think we...
Today's your second...
Continue on.
Today's your second public hearing on August 15th, similar to your gas tax public notice. This was also advertised for two public hearings. It subsequently came up through your Tours Development Council, a recommendation for an additional 1% permitted by Florida statute. And today's your second public hearing on the adoption of that 5th cent.
Is that it?
Just some highlights of the ordinance. There is, it is imposed. It is a five-year period. There is a sunset on this, as there was on your other tax. December 31st of 2019 is when this would sunset, and it would become effective on January 1st of this coming year. If it's adopted today, it becomes a law today, but it will not be collected until, starting on January 1st. For the bed tax collectors that are in the audience or listening, and I know you have some TDC Council long-serving members here today, too, that have attended this hearing as well. Now, if you can open it to public hearing, sir.
All right, at this time, go to the public. Anyone in the public that would like to come up and address the board on this TDC tax ordinance and 1%, anyone? If you would, please come forward. Anyone? All right. I think there's no one. It's closed to the public. All right, anyone here on...
Just to speak real quick, this particular tax is going to Parks and Recreation and Create Funds. The TDC unanimously supported that, and I think we have up here before also. It's an opportunity for us to, as the library folks said, is to help not only the children that can come into our community, but the children that are already existing in our community. But it's an opportunity that we have here. And I'm fully supportive of this through the TDC.
Anyone else?
And if no one else has any comment, I'll... The second reading, so we can go ahead and approve it.
Yes, this second final reading.
So move to...
You're gonna put a motion on the floor that we... I have a second. Got a second here by Commissioner Michael Moore. Is any more, any further discussion from the audience? Anyone, any further from the board? No objection? Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This time, we'll go to our county staff business. Mrs. Roberts, do you have anything before the board today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hearing, Ms. Lanier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As I've just handed to each one of you, and I apologize. I've just received this this morning. For many months now, the board has been approving invoices for UniFirst Corporation. When we bid this contract out and accepted UniFirst as our uniform provider for our Public Works Department, there were several items that were not included on the bid that the Public Works Department requested after the fact. So I've gone back and negotiated with them and put all of those things on our agreement that are being issued to our personnel this morning. I'm hoping that the board would approve this new contract with UniFirst. Most of the items that are on here that were included in the bid, those prices are correct. We've negotiated those things that the employees and staff at Public Works wanted, such as shorts, jeans, quick-drying shirts for our maintenance personnel. Those types of items that were not in the original bid that we found out after we started negotiating the contract that they would prefer to have rather than the regular uniform. Everything has the county logo on it. The board pays half. The employees pay half of the cleaning costs. And so for the board's consideration, this has been vetted out. And I would like the board to approve this new contract. We had approved the contract per the bid, and the board voted to allow UniFirst to be our uniform company from the bid. All this does is add those other items for payment on these invoices so that it is clear, concise, and according to what we agree on and those items that are being provided that were not in the original contract. So I'd like to ask the board to negate the other contract and to approve this contract for two years for this company.
Okay, you just answered my question, two years.
Yes, sir.
A moment, Chairman.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Michael Moore. I have a second over by Commissioner Yeager. Have any questions in the audience? Any further discussion on the board? No opposition? Pass 5-0.
Thank you very much. My next item would just be to ask the board... I have... The rest of this are... These are the last, to my knowledge, the last of the invoices. There are several in the consent agenda that were passed this morning. I've negotiated with them because we had problems with these invoices. They've gone back and give us the old contract price on the old uniforms because that was one of our items that we were discussing in this contract. They had started since the renewal of the contract to charge new prices for old uniforms. So I've gone back and had them amend all of their invoices. And if the board will so approve, per using the old uniform prices for the existing invoices, to just, instead of putting these into the next consent agenda... They've all been vetted by Public Works employees, as well as myself. We're getting them amended to the old prices. And as of today's delivery of the new uniforms, we will use the new contract, and they won't have to be in the consent agenda anymore. But if I could get the board to approve all of the invoices prior to the issuance of the new contract, so we don't have to bring them before the board anymore.
Okay.
A moment, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Michael Moore. Second by Commissioner Yeager. All right, any public comment? Further discussion on the board? No opposition? Pass 5-0.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
That it? All right, Ms. Jenkins.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Sorry, I'm freezing, so I have to keep my jacket... All right, it's cold in here. You have in front of you the monthly report for the Gulf County TDC for the month of August. I will start in saying that July was an exceptional month. Tourist development tax revenues were up 22%. So far for the year, we have collected $975,918.45. Last year, we collected a million. Last year, we collected $1,086, give or take, so we're well to at least meeting that this year. We are $105,000 over our projected budget. So August is done, and we're working on September, but we've had a very, very, very good summer so far. In order to meet the 20% goal, we need to collect $327,540.10 for August and September.
Am I through that number? Three hundred and twenty...
Last year, for the months of August and September, we did $205,000. In your packet is our, what we call our quick stats, so you can see the comparatives from 11, 12, and 13. We'll get August, I'm sorry, we'll get August numbers at the end of September. In regards to how the overall program is going, we are up 10.75% over last year, the first 10 months. Again, our goal this year was 20, and we're at 10.75. All of our other programs are pacing very well. Leads are up, visitation to the Welcome Center is up, visits to the, our social mediums and our website are up. Our crews this summer ended up greeting our beach ambassadors, 2,100 visitors. They gave over 125 leashes. They pulled off about 100,000 pounds of trash off the beach, and I think it was a very successful program. Secondly, I will bring to your attention in your, in your packet, we are having media, fall media mission, starting tomorrow. In your packet, you'll see my, the minute-by-minute, which is at the back of your packet, so you can see how we put on five days of hosting 11 journalists all around the county. I also have in there our budget so far. In our original budget last year, I budgeted $7,500 for this fam trip. Right now, we're under that budget, but you can, you can see how it's detailed out, and I'd like to have approval, I mean, you approved it in November, but I'd like to get it on record again, we will not exceed $7,500. Right now, we're at $6,800.
So moved, Ms. Chair. Successful program last year.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, a second by Commissioner McLemore. One from the audience, and the TDC, I see we have a few. Glad to see them. Anything from the audience? Further discussion with the board? No opposition? Not, this motion passes five and oh.
Thank you. Also, in regard to public relations, this year, we budgeted $45,000 for public relations. We hadn't had any real concerted effort before that. In your packet is, is what we call our ad equivalency report, and for $45,000 investment, through the end of August, we have an ad equivalency of 1.389 million. So if I was gonna say, if I was gonna take money and, and put ads in paper, full-page ad in Southern Living or whatever, we, for a $45,000 investment, pounding the pavement, sending out press releases, meeting with people, we have an ad equivalency of 1.38 million. Our goal was to at least, at least match our advertising budget, which was 416,000. So we've well exceeded that goal, and we've reached 2.6 million viewers or, you know, people. So I would say that is a very good return on investment. We are also full swing into our fall campaign. We got ahead of it early with the help of my marketing committee and my council. We got out in front of the September and October season. You can see in there that we have a promotion going on, and so far, the program is doing very well. It will run through the middle of October. And finally, at my meeting the other day, we had, we reviewed the print bids for the 2015 Visitor Guide. We'll start that process. It's included in your packet. We had five bids. We worked through the clerk's office and followed the county bid policy, and my council is recommending that we award the printing of the 2015 Visitor Guide to solo printing based out of Miami, Florida, and I'd like to ask for your approval as well.
What's in? So moved, Ms. Chair.
Solo printing. It's all in your, in your packet.
Sure, okay. Alright, motion by Commissioner Jaeger. A second by Commissioner Bryan. One in the audience? Can put any discussion on this? Any further on the board? Motion, running, five and oh. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Jennifer's up there. I'd mentioned a meeting or two ago about a buoy program in the bay, and I think there's, there was interest on, with the TDC board with, with doing that project. Is, is there a starting point that we need to start working on that? Because I think it's really needed to show some of the channels that are, that are through the seagrass, that, you know, you don't have to go across seagrass beds to get to certain points. When I was out there a, as a young boy with my grandfather all the time, I knew exactly where those channels are. Now, even when I go out there, you know, I have to look to find them. If we mark those, that's gonna, that's gonna be a huge improvement in what we do now. So I didn't know if you had thought anymore about that, or...
I, I was planning on putting it on the October agenda for the council meeting, and again, the idea was that the buoys, right now, of the buoys that are left, they're flat, and that they would be on, on, you know, they would rise and fall with the, with the water, and have information about slowing down, you're coming up on shallow area and the grass beds. But Commissioner Jaeger, I was gonna put that on the October agenda for the TDC meeting.
Okay. Great, that's just for the general public. I know there's been some concern about grass beds.
Yes, sir.
To, to let them know that we're moving forward on, on working with the fishermen and all that to mark some of those.
This is something that we, we need to be very, very careful with. Now, you know, you mentioned information on those buoys. We have to be very careful with this project.
Yes.
If not, we'll get into trouble. I can tell you, I can assure you of that. There are a lot of commercial fishermen, including myself, that use that bay out there. We all wanna protect the bay, but we don't wanna be limited where we can go and where we can't go, how fast we can go and how fast we can't go. I'm real concerned about this project, so.
Just for a little, to alleviate some of your concerns, this is about marking channels. There's nothing about anything else, it's about marking channels, so people will know where those channels are. It'll be much easier for them to go through that channel to get to a certain spot than to try, to go over the grass bed. So they'll get there a lot quicker, they'll get there without harming the bay and those type of things. So it's, it's all about information.
I, I hear you on that, but she also pointed out that there would be information too, you know. Need to be very careful.
Caution you.
Well, as we begin that, the discussion in October, I'll come to the council before proceeding with anything, of course. And one of our council members, Captain Charlene Burke, is, you know, she's a charter captain marine biologist. She is, is very interested in helping to be influential on, in that.
Okay, will, will FWC be involved with this project?
Coast Guard. No, not necessarily. This is, this is a Gulf County project that we want to mark the channels in the bay. FWC's not gonna be involved in that. We don't, we don't need their help, we can take care of that. We've got commercial fishermen, we've got charter boat captains, we've got all these folks that, that know this, know the channels in the bay. You know Clintmore, Markmore, all those type of people, we'll involve those.
About the Coast Guard. Coast Guard.
How, I haven't even begun...
Okay.
But it would be very, very collaborative and very, very much, you know, through an approval process.
That it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Whitfield, do you have anything before the board today? Larry?
Sir, I've got one thing. I've got a ship project that was done probably about three years ago from Miss Ruby Brown. She had a little issue where she had to file an insurance claim, and I just found out about this yesterday. Miss Dig...
Where is this residence at?
It's a project on Marvin Avenue.
Marvin Avenue, okay. Proceed.
She filed, she filed a claim, I believe, in May, yeah, May 22nd, and they've since then cut her a check for 41,000, $4,190.73. The issue they have is, the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is listed as an additional insured on the check, and because we have a second mortgage on the property due to it being a ship project, what I need is just a signature by the chairman to get this check, so they can get this check cashed.
Anything from the board?
Question. So, what were the funds for generally? And...
From what I, she had mentioned to me, there were, they had a leak from an air conditioner, and it's, it's, I guess molded some subflooring in the house, apparently $4,100 worth.
So will the funds be used to make the repairs?
Right. Definitely will. They're also, what they'll have to do, after that, they'll have to send the invoice to the insurance company, and then they'll collect their additional monies after the fact, which is...
Oh, they gave that.
Um, it's a little over eight, $847, and, and which, if those funds, if, for instance, the, the project may perhaps increase, those funds are projected to increase as well. So they'll be able to collect that, that $800, $847 after they show proof that they had those fixed, so. But what they're asking is a signature from the board to cash the check, to get the repairs done, so. But I just need board approval.
Alright, anyone from the audience on this? Other board discussion on it?
So moved, Ms. Chair.
Hold, would you hold the motion?
I'll hold the motion.
I just wanted to go to an attorney and make sure we're okay with all this.
The way Brett explained it, it's a conditional approval. You're gonna provide the chairman's signature, they're gonna release the funds, but Brett's still gonna verify as long as, as well as the insurance company, that the actual services to the property are completed. So as long as that's a condition of that, the county will cooperate in as much as that you have a lien against that property right now with your ship funds. The steps that are gonna be followed are appropriate.
Alright, so moved, Ms. Chair. Alright, now we go over here. We've got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smiley. Any further, want from the audience? Any further board discussion on this? No opposition? Motion passes five and oh.
Thank you. One thing, the next check will probably come the same way where the board will have to approve it as well.
Okay. Give him an awesome time.
Thank you.
What it takes you need. Thank you, Mr. Larry. Anford?
I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Arthur?
Morning. I got one thing. I got the annual contract for mosquito control with Department of Agriculture in yesterday. It requires a motion for the chairman to sign it, and then the certified budget will be before the next meeting, and chairman will need to sign that as well. So I just need a motion to get the chairman to sign it.
Alright, need a motion.
I'm moved.
Alright. Motion by Commissioner Bryan?
I'll second it. Now, I have to say, I've had a lot of comments about the, hadn't been, hadn't been too, too bad a mosquito season, so I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if we can take full credit for that, or it's just rain, or whatever, but y'all've done a good job with it all, Mark.
We'll, we'll take credit every time that, that we get a chance.
Alright, anyone from the audience? Motion, second, any, one from the other. Other board discussion? Not, motion passes five and oh. That it? Richardson?
After nine.
Thank you, sir. Sumner?
That's right.
Thank you, ma'am. Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, the first item I wanna follow up from our last meeting, I had indicated that the Health Trust Board was going to meet at a special meeting to hear the county's, your budget committee and this county commission's request with regards to assistance on the half-cent sales tax surplus. I was provided numbers this morning. I wanted to update you all two things. One, we have another meeting scheduled with the Health Trust Board today at noon at Sacred Heart, and they've called that meeting to continue the discussion and consider the county's request. As of today, it appears that there's $99,840.77 of half-cent sales tax funds available for this fiscal year, and we have a projected monthly annualized collection of $57,451. So if I understand that correctly, Sherry, then we have three more months projected at $57,000 and change of revenue from our sales tax. If that number works itself out, that will be the highest half-cent sales tax revenue we've generated going back to 2006. Each year, it has gone up from $38,000 in 2006, and consistently gone up each year. Last year, you were at $56,000 per month. This year, you'll be at 57,451 if the numbers continue to project out. We will go forward with those numbers this afternoon at Sacred Heart with the Health Trust Board. With that number, it looks you're gonna be about $240,000 in surplus of funds. With those surplus funds, we will request the, the trust board's cooperation in the county commission's request to provide that for uninsured, underinsured, and indigent care on EMS transports based off the county's numbers in our non-emergency transport runs for the past two years. Houston, Brett, Sherry have been working with me on that, and we will go into the trust board and, and ask for their support and adopt a resolution today pledging those surplus funds for the coming years towards the county's EMS budget. Along those same lines, at your last meeting, you had voted to indicate to ACHA with regards to the LIP grant match of $268,000. That letter has now been sent to the Health Department indicating we do not have the additional revenue of that $268,000, and that letter has now since been sent. At our next meeting on 23rd, I'll report back to you all and let you know, well, hopefully it'll be before then, maybe at one of our next budget meetings, I'll report to you all and let you know how the Health Trust Board decided at their meeting today. The next item I have is with regards to the pages we pulled from the agenda. If I can direct you all to pages 20 through 21.
Twenty and 21.
Twenty one. And if we can, we'll consider 22 as part of the discussion. In reviewing that with Ms. Jenkins, if you note on the change order on page 21, in the language, the outpost design is the company that built and designed and currently supports your tourist development website. Last year, their money was budgeted to hire them under a contract, and it was a recommendation of your TDC council at the summer's meetings to continue them in their ongoing support and maintenance of the site and further development of that site. The money's been budgeted, the funds are available. However, you'll indicate, as you go down, you'll see it says that it's not to exceed $220,000 for website design, implementation, and hosting. In discussing that with Ms. Jenkins, that number doesn't accurately reflect what's being requested for the coming year. Right now, it's $60,000 for continued support and maintenance, not 220. And in addition to that, there's been a request that $35,000 in addition to that be budgeted for the coming year for additional development of the site as you go forward, whether it be whatever incidents that you all came up with in the TDC. So the number accurately should be reflected as the 95,000. You'll see the net change in the contract price above. Down below, it reflects a $220,000 contract price. That would be an aggregate of last year and this year. And just for the purposes of this change order, I wanted the permission of the commission to change that to accurately reflect, that'll be $95,000 this year for outpost design, not 220,000. Okay? If I can, I'll just direct your attention to page 22. There is a recommendation that the EDC, as it's been formed, the majority of that website design and construction was done through the TDC. At the EDC meetings, it was recommended that the website also piggyback off of the structure. I don't know the technical terms, it's not my world, but the site design and everything that's been built for Gulf County is now gonna be piggybacked off of that, and the EDC is now going to create their own site. There's also a hosting fee per month, that's in addition to that, and that also is put on the change order, because that will be outpost design that assists the county in that regard as well going forward. So you've approved the change order under 22. The language is fine in that, but if I can, I'd ask for you to make that, allow us to make those changes to the change order and contract addendum for pages 21.
So moved, Ms. Chair, to approve with the necessary changes that the county attorney has outlined.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Smiley. One from the audience, any questions on this? Concerns? One from the board? Opposition? Passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I'm on the topic of the TDC, I brought it up at your last two meetings, actually last three meetings, of your ordinance that you adopted in 2011, as well as the state statute. Your appointments for the TDC will be rolling over at the end of this month. You have four seats that have become available. At your previous meetings, you've notified the public to submit applications with a deadline of September 1st, and as I brought to your attention, you have a current policy that was put in place in 2004 with regards to term limits for volunteer committees. You also had a policy in place that capped people to serve on only one committee at a time. Now, you repealed that back in April of this year so that you could have a volunteer serve on more than one committee. That's been done away with. The only other policy that's still in place is that you have one that says people can only serve on a committee for up to two consecutive terms.
only serve on a committee for up to two consecutive terms. Um, historically, taking you back to two thousand and eleven, you reset your board for the TDC, um, at that time and you accepted applications. We're now two, well, two years into this process after making these appointments and the adoption of new ordinance. Next year we'll have another four roll-on or roll-off. Um, but this policy, obviously, we have resubmitted applications from current members who are seeking to be reappointed and that policy is in place, so they're in conflict with one another. Um, it's been a discussion for us since July and August, but now we're here in September, it needs to be addressed. I know Ms. Jenkins has several subcommittees coming up this month and additional, uh, TDC meetings, and now you just adopted a brand-new, uh, additional percent for the TDC as well. So there's a lot of issues up before the TDC and I think they need clarity as to what their board's going to be, and as do I, in terms of sunshine training and getting people up to speed on the county policies for public records and what have you. So I'd ask the commission for some direction in that regard.
Let, let me ask one question. Have we, uh, received any applications? Do we have any applications?
I'd let Ms. Jenkins, I know that we have received considerable, but Ms. Jenkins, you can speak to the number.
Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
All I need to know, we do have applications. All right.
Chairman, this is a tough issue. Number one, the, the, the four that are, are seated on there now have, have give extensive time and, uh, have extensive knowledge of the workings of the TDC and, and that type thing. It's tough because we do have three applicants that are interested in serving on that, on that board also, and we've got that policy in place. Uh, I wish we'd addressed the policy long before we got to this point, but I, to be honest with you, I'm not for term limits for, for volunteers. We have few volunteers as it is. I know that on some of our boards, uh, like Enterprise Zone, uh, we've had the same members for a number of years because nobody else wants to serve on those. So, um, it, this is a tough issue. So, uh, I, I, I don't know the direction that we need to go. What I would, what I would have preferred is we've done away with the policy to begin with. The three that have, uh, applied, they're good, they're, uh, you know, I've saw the names, they're, they're good folks, are committed to, 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 I'm sure, the TDC, but we have got some, some folks that are, that will be rolling off that board that, that has extensive knowledge and have put their heart and soul on that board. So I'm interested to hear what the rest of the board has to, what their thoughts are on the process.
I'm, I'm, I feel about the same way. Being such a small community, term limits are, kind of hard as hard to get people to volunteer as is, especially, you know, dedicated people. You got lots of people who will put their name on a list and never show up. Dedication from the people, I mean, you have to be careful with that term limit.
Um, I, I, I am not in favor of changing the policy, um, at this point with this notice. We do have people apparently that are, um, interested in serving on the boards. I think we need to be cautious with, um, assuming that other people cannot serve in a, as good of a capacity as, as the current folks. I don't know whose rolling off. I don't know who has applied to come on, but I, I think that, um, a lot of folks in the public are in favor of term limits in many different positions because it gives new blood and new ideas and allows a body to move in new directions that can sometimes be very positive. I would just say, I do know that at times if we don't have someone to serve, it can put us in a bad position, but I would rather us give a little bit more consideration to this rather than just throw a policy out in, in this quick notice.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, let me, Neil, I'll come back to you. All right.
I'm going to go back to, to this issue again. This is something that we need to be very cautious with, you know, uh, I believe, though down the road, if we make the wrong decision here today, it's going to come back to bite us. Uh, we have board policy that, that we've set. We have applicants, not that I agree with it. I know, I know we have some dedicated volunteers on this program that have done a excellent, excellent job, and personally I hate to see them go. But we have to do what we have to do, and, and we've created a policy so we wouldn't get into any trouble. It's, I know it's very hard to get volunteers, uh, to come out and sit on these committees, very, very hard, you know? And one of the reasons is, some of these volunteers, I've said this before, we've got certain people out there that files ethics complaints against them. So who wants to give their time, you know, to sit on these committees with that going on? But at this point in the game where we're at today, I will have to stay with board policy on this.
And I, I, I don't disagree with working with board policies because that's the purpose of putting a policy in place, but, um, I still go back saying when, you know, you're dealing with volunteers, we still need to have some in line that, you know, you never know, don't have no one to replace those people. So if the policy says that they got to go in two years, so I just, it, it's several ways you can look at it. But now if you've got people who want to serve, I think, you know, we ought to fix it where they can serve. Give everybody the opportunity, the chance to just speak.
All right, anyone else on the board?
All, all good discussion, all good points. This is a tough issue.
Let me, let me make a comment on this, uh, I can let you forget about things, but if some of you, I look out there, some were sitting here in two thousand and eleven. This, uh, TDC and I was a new board member to come on and bring this to the attention. We went from a train wreck to we have a smooth sailing ship. So let's think positive on this. Let's think positive. We can, we, these people that, that are going to roll off, we have our policy here and we should stick with it, you know? And let, I, I'm, I want to be optimistic, the fact that we bring on new members, we can even be, be better. That's what I'm shooting for, let's even make it better. But we've got a fine, our TDC is one of the, it really works good and, and great, and the reason because, uh, good leadership and it's, and, and the members that were selected to go on this, uh, I know I hadn't, I submitted some names, I got three on there, so, uh, lucky enough that the ones that I checked, there was three of them on there and they've done a marvelous job. We, we don't need to change here. We, if we're going to address this thing, we can address it later, but we need to, if we have, if we didn't have applications, then we might, could, uh, give some consideration, but we need to just stay with policy. That's the fair thing to do. Anyway, I just wanted to implement that, but we do have a good TDC. A train wreck in two thousand and eleven, big time. All right, anything else? Anyone from the audience would like to, uh, hey, yeah, Mr., yeah, Mr. Whitfield, come on up.
Tony, good to see you.
Before y'all get off the current subject, I'd like to tell you, as a member of the TDC, uh, by the way, I'm Tony Vickel, six oh ten, Nodwell Strife. As a member of the TDC, um, me along with all the other members are more with Warren Jaeger. You got a train running down the tracks. Uh, we have three specific members that are due to roll off who are all bed tax collectors. They are the bed tax collector members. To replace all of those bed tax collector members at this point in time, I think would be ill-advised. Reason being, you've just passed an additional one-cent tax, that all three of these members have been instrumental in setting up a design for where that money's going to go. Uh, you also have the chairman of the marketing committee, the chairman of the finance committee, uh, that have been leaders on this committee. For that reason, on behalf of myself and the rest of the TDC board, we would ask that you at least for this period of time override your two-term limit, limitation and, uh, allow them to at least go into the pool. If there are people who are better members that would be able to serve better, then sure, maybe you want to put them in a competition, which is what it should be. But these are leadership positions that are in place. We have a ship rolling, uh, down the stream, it's going well. Uh, I think, uh, when you look at the economics of the economy of this county, it, the TDC and the role they play are instrumental in keeping up the economy of this county at this point in time. I would ask that you consider, uh, overriding at least for this term, the two-term limitation and allow them to be in the pool of applicants, uh, to be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Good point.
I would just like to say also, if, if we are going to have a change of policy, I, I would think that this is something that should be in our agenda packet to consider. So that if a board member has a question or needs additional information on making a policy change, that we have the opportunity to gather that information prior to this meeting. I think making a policy change is a, is a big issue and it should be on the agenda.
That discussion, Chairman, I, I guess you don't need a motion, do you? Just follow board policy?
Well, we, we do. Um, just, it, it was June of two thousand and four. Um, Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner, uh, Trailer had instituted this policy. Excuse me, it's been on the books for ten years. If the commission does nothing with the policy, then it would be my recommendation that Ms. Jenkins and the administration submit the list of applicants to you all for your September meeting so you can make an appointment. If you change the policy, then the list changes, obviously, of what you receive in your applications. As you indicated, Commissioner, policy change is up and whether you consider or don't, but you still need a list of names. Is that list of eight people or is that list of four people? And I think the TDC needs that direction from you and the staff to let you know what you need in your packet for consideration. If you all haven't seen or looked at those applications, we'd encourage you to, to do that, um, the next two weeks so you can make that appointment this month, um, so we can make it. But I think they need direction as to what is on that list, with the current policy or without, and that you've received applications in both those regards.
Stay on course. Stay with the policy.
All right. Get a motion and all, do we have one?
I, I, I'll put it out there, uh, motion to stay on course, stay with the current policy we have. And, and, excuse me, let Ms. Jenkins or who, yeah, Ms. Jenkins come back with us a list of, of the applicants, let the board choose the list or whatever, however we do it.
I guess the only discussion I have now is, is, is I would like for the board to look at this policy because we're losing some good people and some very knowledgeable people. And I, I think that this ought to be on the agenda at some point to discuss. Uh, we've overridden it before, uh, for different, for different groups, uh, because it's difficult, it's difficult to get somebody on the planning board, it's difficult to get somebody on Enterprise Zone. But I think it needs to be a discussion in, in a small community that, that, it, we at least have a, an open dialogue and see where the majority of the board wants to go eventually with this policy. Uh, but being as it is policy now, I, I will, I'll defer to the rest of the board if they want to follow policy and I'll...
All right, uh, call for a vote here. Anyone in the audience have any more to put on this? All right, if no one? All right. Opposition, the motion to stay with the policy.
On table now, we're not going to...
But, uh, I don't know what you got on table there. Five and oh. Stay with the policy.
And so it's September twenty-third, then you'll have, uh, presumably, uh, applications have reviewed and recommendations for appointment to fill those vacancies. Um, last item I have, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is a, um, I'm pleased to give you the professional medical services agreement. We've been working with Sacred Heart for several months. Dr. Pablo had big, had been your medical services director, uh, for our jail. Um, Sacred Heart has indicated that Dr. Bruner would be taking over that role. Um, the protocol i- is remaining the same, um, and they have confirmed that, but I had now have the agreement for the chairman's signature. I'd like your approval to have him sign that and so he can get that instituted with Sacred Heart moving forward.
Get a motion. So move, Mr. Chair. My motion, second by Commissioner Smiley. Anyone from the audience on this? Any further board discussion on it? Motion pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
One, one, yeah, you mind me asking a question? The, the meeting that y'all are going to today, it, it basically will confirm with, with that committee, hopefully will confirm with that committee, that those excess funds can go to offset, uh, our EMS. EMS, correct? Is that going to be unanticipated revenue for this coming year or is that going to be anticipated if we come to a conclusion that, that, that we can do that? Because that will affect our budget.
It is already in our budget. We put in seventy thousand as cash carry forward, um, going into two thousand and fifteen and we put in seventy thousand, um, new revenue received from that in two thousand and fifteen. So it's already factored into your budget.
Okay, I realize the seventy thousand, but if there's two forty there and we have, uh, on indigent care that we've got to continue, are we, are we saying that we can do over the seventy? Uh, we're just sticking with the seventy?
The request from the county is the seventy that you had in your budget committees.
Thanks for the clarification. Anything else? No, sir. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first item is really information only. Uh, next Wednesday, I think on the seventeenth, there's several things going on. One is consortium meeting that Mr. Jaeger's lined up to go to, and I think the attorney's probably going to yet. Um, consortium meeting, same day watershed meeting in Bay County to do with BP. Same day, BP's going to be here on the Hollywood Boat Roundup and, and pier. So that's at four o'clock on, on the seventeenth. A lot going on during that period of time, and I, I just want to bring to your attention because as time goes on, Treasury's made some determination of what they're going to do with the monies and, and it's going to get busier and it's going, we're trying to figure out how to, how to spread, make sure we got watershed covered, consortium covered, be here to meet with BP on the, uh, when we restore monies here. But as time goes on, there's, we got to be thinking about how we're going to cover all, all bases, just, just for your information.
While, while you're on that, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you don't mind, comment a little bit on it. I think it's time that we, uh, all the committee together, the, our Restore Act Committee together over the next couple of weeks, especially after the seventeenth meeting, there's a lot that's going on. Many of you've read in the paper, uh, that BP was declared negligent, uh, so that's going to affect the amount of, of fine. The fine could be, if the, if the barrels are, are correct that, that was lost, it could be up to eighteen billion dollars, which is eighteen times more than what we're going to get out of the transocean. We're going to get about three million dollars out of the transocean. I don't know if, uh, how, how long that's going to take, but there's going to be some serious dollars coming to all the counties, all the coastal counties in Florida and through, through Texas. So, uh, you're right, uh, we're going to reach a point in time that, uh, we're going to need some extra help. I know Bay County's, you know, hired Jim Mullers, their coordinator, they've also hired a environmental, uh, attorney to write their, uh, implementation plan, which, which, the good thing about that now is we're not, we're not going to have to use ad loan monies for that. The Treasury rules now state that we can use planning monies for, uh, getting some staff or not necessarily staff, but consultant on to write those plans. So we're going to need an, an environmental attorney type, uh, at some point, and that's why I want to put the committee together because I want the committee's blessing on this, is, is we're going to have to, to get somebody to help us to write that implementation plan. First thing we'll have to do, and I think there's a form that we need to make sure that we, we get to Treasury before the fifteenth. Uh, there's also an application process, uh, for monies to hire someone to write that implementation plan. And so at some point, we're going, I'm going to be gradually coming back faster and faster to this board to get approval and, and, and to use the committee to continue to proceed on the right path of this. There's going to be some serious dollars for some serious projects and, and we need to have everybody's buy-in. There's forty-five day public, uh, hearing processes, so the public will be very engaged in this, but just to let you know that this is moving, I know that we all wondered if the money was ever going to come, but now we, we see that it is going to come and we need to make sure we have everything in place that we need to have in place to do this correctly. So we'll be coming back to you, but I will work with the attorney on setting the committee meeting for that and we'll come back to you at the next board meeting with maybe a, a recommendation.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner.
There's one other comment. That self-evaluation has to be in by the fifteenth. You know, Mr. Jaeger, myself, and Sherri sat down, we boiled eyes and, and on conference call and, and dealt with that. There's a lot of things going on that you don't even see during the daytime that, to do with BP oil spill. Uh, the second item I have is to do with the thirty-acre site that the county holds mortgages on, uh, with the gun club, I was creep road. Uh, received a phone call or an email about three or four weeks ago from co-engineers from Terry Wells and asked if I could attend a meeting. a meeting to do with the 30-acre site. I agreed to do it. At the same time, he had made contact with Mr. Dan Garlick. Dan is here today in the audience. You know, I talked to Dan last night and asked if he could be here today. I really thought the meeting was going to be here in Gulf County. The next day I found out that through email that it's going to be in Panama City on 23rd Street at the Corps of Engineers building. You know, I was the county representative at the meeting. There were four gun club members there. Dan has been hired, Dan Garlick and his firm has been hired by the gun club. But the issue at hand is dealing with the Corps of Engineers, we're the mortgage holder. We had gone out and all the 30 acres on 10 acres of that site, we had got a permit in Water Management District to put a building in. Things changed. The building wound up being located and erected here in Port St. Joe and not on Howard Creek Road. It settled in 30 acres to gun club on time and we still hold a mortgage on it. But the Corps is saying that they would like the pile of sand that came from the Port Authority that was put there and the impact that we made. We had to dig a stormwater pond that was permitted by Water Management District that can't have a pond on a piece of land where gun club is, caused a problem with ducks flying over one thing or another to the pond. But the Corps is looking at a tolling, T-O-L-L-I-N-G agreement that county can possibly enter in with the gun club, a participation by the county to remove the about five acres of impact the county has made on that 30-acre site. And the big part would be, we actually started digging a stormwater pond, probably dug a quarter of that pond that was engineered, quarter to a third of that pond and put that material back in the pond. It'd be a lot of, lot, using Doja work to put the material back in. Not asking you today to agree to do anything other than I'm asking your permission to, or your consideration to agree to the concept, sitting down with the gun club or me sitting down with the gun club and trying to work out a participation that Gulf County can help out with the gun club to get on the property that they're buying and to fill the pond back in and whatever else we need to do. And if we can figure that out, bring it back to the board for your consideration for us to go forward. But it very well may do, it very well may, the Corps is okay if we can work it out with the gun club and clean up the five acres. Gun club wants to unpack about an acre and a half of other land that they're dealing separately with the Corps of Engineers on that piece of land. But for the board's consideration, talking with the gun club and trying to work out an agreement for joint participation by the county and the gun club on removing about approximately, I'm using their numbers, about five acres of impact. Some of this impact, not clear on this part yet, there's still a sizable pile of sand there that came out of Port Authority that was stopped out there. And I'm not sure if that can be used on that site or it need to be hauled off. If it's going to be hauled off, we need to load it up and haul it off. And we can probably use sand somewhere else if we wind up with the sand. But on the table today is your consideration of allowing me to discuss with the gun club and their consultant on a participation agreement that I will bring back to the board for you to approve or disapprove.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have much of a choice on this. We work with the Corps of Engineers on a lot of different projects and we want to work with them on this specific project. I think it's important to note that this was permitted activity that the county did back several years ago before we sold the property. So I think that some Doja work is an easy way, so to speak, to get through this process. So I'd make the motion to go ahead and proceed with working with the gun club to do what we need to do, that particular 30 acres.
Second that motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Smiley.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask if Mr. Dan Garlick would have any comment based on what I've said, if anything may help clear anything up or not, maybe not, but...
Dan, would you like to come up, please, and you can implement a little?
Dan Garlick for the record. Garlick and Ramon Associates, that much taller.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Some of you were here the last time, I guess we were doing the last round with that. The tolling agreement is an easy way out. You don't want to mess with the Corps of Engineers. We were there in the past few times. Came close that it was going to be sent off to EPA.
Just old tired.
It's not a problem. The tolling agreement is an easy way out to resolve. The Corps doesn't want to get into this thing. You don't want to buck up against these guys because if it goes to EPA, then it's not going to be good for anybody. It's like wrestling with IRS forever. So I think Don hit on the number. What they're looking for right now is a cooperative response to their tolling agreement that's going to include, who's going to do what really is what it comes down to. And there is, there's a, there's an impact out there. When I got involved with the gun club, I told them right off the bat, it's going to be an issue down the road. The Water Management District has issued their permit and there's been a lot of work done. But it'll require getting to that point. So it's not like we're starting from a problem and moving forward. But what you're looking at is probably a restoration plan, some monitoring, and then determining who's going to do the work. So first thing to go to the Corps is just what Don said is a, some type of a concept that they agree, Corps of Engineers will issue a tolling agreement and then from there, then we have to itemize all the issues that will resolve the problem. Simple as that.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Garlick, before you go, it's my understanding that this issue is because there was wetlands filled without a Corps permit. Am I on the right track here? It's not that there's a pond and a pond can't be on a gun range. It's because your client, gun club, cannot move forward without restoring wetlands.
Your opinion is correct.
Okay. So I think that we need to address this properly, that this is a very serious issue. It's not about a duck pond. It's about property that we have sold to the gun club and that was not permitted work. Potentially had a water management permit, but we did not have a Corps permit. And I think we need to be very cautious when we do work on property that we are getting the proper permit so that we do not find ourselves in this position. And I think that this board needs to bore upon our county administrator to take action and to take this very seriously so that we can resolve this issue without it going to the EPA or this county will face potential, a potential larger problem. And I just wanted to clarify that and the gravity of the situation.
It is a grave situation.
All right. Thank you.
Keep us out of that Panama City office, Dan. We've been there before. Okay. Was anything else from the public? We have a motion on the board by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Smiley. Any other board discussion on this?
The only thing I would discuss is, the way I understand it, is what we have to go by when we work on properties like that is a wetlands map. What's the term for it?
We usually, our cop plan requires us to look at the national wetlands inventory map.
National wetlands inventory map. And it shows all of that property as upland. So I think you're right. We need to be careful what we do. But this will clear that up.
Probably you're going to work with the gun club and work with the Corps.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll bring it back to you.
Good deal.
I have, I want to comment. When we have a project, it's just like any other private entity that is taking on a project. We should set that standard and we should live up to the same requirements that the private individuals and entities have to live up to when they are developing a project. And typically you would have an engineer that would check the soils, check the site and advise regarding wetlands. Everybody else has to do it and we should do it too. And I don't think that we should look at it in a light and cavalier way because we, this is going to cost the county taxpayers more money. And we're talking about budget issues and we cannot afford to be sloppy. And we cannot expect private developers to jump through all the hoops and do everything that all these governmental bodies require, but for some reason, we don't think that we have to live up to the same standard. And I think that we need to set a higher bar for ourselves.
Well, in saying that, I'm just going to refer to, just to say, I disagree with your analogy. I think we do do things as appropriately as we can. I think staff does as appropriately as we can. Every now and then you're going to have these federal agencies and state agencies that question what you do. And there's nobody with a cavalier attitude that I know of. Everybody tries to go by the book. Everybody tries to cover bases. I'll assure you, me and Mr. Butler's been in that ivory tower in Panama City before. We don't ever want to go again. And I think that the staff understands the gravity of the situation. This is a way to proceed that will clear it up, but nobody's acting in a cavalier attitude.
Mr. Butler, when did you meet with Mr. Wells from the Corps and the gun club?
Probably about three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago.
I believe that it was more than that. But even at three to four weeks, this is something that should have been brought to the board immediately and addressed immediately.
I think Dan probably knows when we met. Dan probably has a good idea of when we met. It's about three or four weeks ago.
I don't remember exactly the date, but it was at least that long ago and maybe a bit more than that. But it's been one of these things where, you know, with the regulatory agencies, you try to get a meeting. They want you in there as quick as possible. And I think we got on that pretty fast. Now we've got to wait for them to come back, but we did receive an email recently that said it's time to come to the table and bring a plan. So that's where we're at at this point.
Mr. Chairman, my... Didn't need, they requested. I was waiting on information. I was, in my mind, I was waiting on information from Terry Wells out of Pensacola, out of Pensacola office to do with the tolling agreement. He received an email from Terry saying, where we at? I replied to him pretty much immediately. I replied to him. Then Dan replied to him. He received the same email I got. Then I called Dan and, you know, make sure we're on the same page. So there was nothing to bring to the board until we had some kind of response out of the Corps and we just got it.
That's understandable.
And I do recall, I have no clue what days that Dan was traveling outside of the United States, but I think pretty much immediately after that meeting, he was going to start traveling. So it pretty much dates from when we had the meeting. It was not months ago.
Okay. I'll have a motion, a motion in a second. Butler, can you, kind of got off a little bit. Any more from the audience? Any other discussion from the board, opposition? Motion pass five and O.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Chair?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to address ourselves to the board. Smiley, would you like to first?
Yes. On September 20th, 12:00 to 6:00 PM at Centennial Building, we will, they will be holding a fundraiser for one of the former city commissioners, William Thursby. He had ran into a trouble. It probably can happen to anyone. But I know as a community, we have seen a citizen of St. Joe run into trouble. We all have come together to try to help out. So as I speak right now, he's in Texas, visiting a doctor getting treatment. But I just would like to ask everybody, if possible, on September 20th, if you could come to the Centennial Building, they will be selling Boston butts, old chickens, dinner plates, or if you just want to give a donation. So I want to put that out. And I also want to put out two different ones in the community. Mr. Peterson, Mr. Nathan Peterson especially, at those affordable homes, they are coming.
All right. All right. Well...
I've covered one.
And the chair is good. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Ken Foster, are you present? There he is. Come on up, please.
Thanks for having me today.
Yeah, we got a little thing out here, but you have the floor. Give your name right over here to this lady.
Ken Foster with Bike Florida. I live in Tallahassee is where my office is.
Hey, Ken, you have the floor.
And some of you may remember when Bike Florida was here in 2012. Bike Florida is the state's largest cycling nonprofit and we do a bicycle tour every year in a different part of the state. Part of our goal is to demonstrate the economic benefit of cycling. So we take these tours in different places. In 2012, we started in Tallahassee. We went to Quincy and Weahichka is actually where we stayed that year at the Honeyville Center and stopped in Port St. Joe for our lunch and our riders really liked it. The community really helped us out. So we wanted to come back again. I've been working with the TDC a lot and we'll be staying at the Civic Center, also known as the Centennial Building. I think it has a third name, doesn't it? But we'll be here in the last week of March in 2015, the 25th, 26th, and 27th. And we'll fill up all of the hotel rooms that are here and we'll have about 650 bike riders. So they'll also visit all of the restaurants there, although a lot of them do eat our meal plan there at the Civic Center as well. The folks that typically come on our rides are 60 years old, 60, 65 years old. They are from, 75% of them are from outside of the state of Florida. They usually have higher educations and higher incomes. They're retired or working professionals without kids. So they're likely to come back to this community as well. I frequently get emails, people asking me questions about where we've been to remind them where they can go. So not only will we have a good impact while we're here this time, we'll have, they'll come back in the future. We do work a lot with the law enforcement so that they know where all the bike riders will be. I'll meet with them, show them our routes and they can make suggestions, of course, and we'll change what we need to as necessary. We work with the off-duty officers to not really control intersections. We don't, we don't, you know, we're just regular vehicles out there using the road. But we, at busy intersections, we like to have an officer to maybe remind traffic to be polite when they see 200, 300, 400 bike riders coming down the road. It's really, really quite a sight. And I think that is about it. We'll spend between $8,000 and $12,000 a day while we're here on different things. So you're welcome to come out and ride with us or visit us. If you have any questions.
All right. Hold just a moment.
Yes. I actually had an opportunity to help work with this project in 2012, I believe it was. This is a big deal, gentlemen and ladies. This is a big deal. So I'm here to help you again.
Great.
You know, give me a call, whatever I can do to support you. I support you 100%.
Thank you. Yeah, it is, it's pretty amazing to watch 510s get set up and all these people move around. We work a lot with the community organizations to help them raise money for their individual interests. So we'll contract with different organizations and pay them several thousand dollars to help with rest stops, to move the luggage trucks, to help serve food, to do a lot of different things. So...
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, also, I think last time you rode on Cape San Blas.
Yes.
Cape San Blas Road. You'll be, if you have not been down there, you'll be glad to know that there's a bicycle lane now. The road's been widened. It's got five-foot shoulders. It'll be a lot safer, a lot better trip for you down C-30.
Yes, we will go down that way again and it is great to see those improvements. And that will, that makes a big difference for these folks when they want to come back. So we'll bring them here to see it and then they'll definitely want to come back here. We like this area not only because it is so welcoming, but it is also so beautiful and it's not filled with tall buildings and, you know, things like you would find over in Panama City, which can be fun, but aren't really what this demographic is after. So that, yeah, those trails will be... Yeah, they'll be riding their bikes three hundred and fifty, four hundred miles. They start at dawn, and they're back noon to two. They like to eat and fall asleep. And get up and ride the next morning.
Hey, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, it's nice to be here. Thanks for having us back again.
As a, one of your points.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Ken.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone in the public have any business before the board? Dr. Hardman?
Pat Hardman, just a quick invitation. First, I want to thank Lord and Sheriff Harrison for meeting with us out on the Cape with Representative Hollis and Bashir's. Had a great meeting. I think we're going to move on with that. We will be hosting a meeting with U.S. Representative Steve Sutherland and Dombrowski, Michael Dombrowski, referencing the restoration on the Cape, beach restoration, and the problems that are going to be, that are occurring now, the hotspots, what's going on. That'll be October sixth, five o'clock. That's going to be a really important meeting. We're losing ground, it's eroding very much. It will be at the St. Joe Country Club Golf Club, five o'clock, open to the public. It affects us in every way in Gulf County, economics, personal, what have you. So we're inviting anyone and everyone to come out here from, Representative Sutherland, and from, you know, get the science of what's going on, and let us know what we can do and what might be possible. Cobra FEMA, we're running up on a wall, we've got to run it, look at, running some in-runs here to try to get to some state funding to help get some of the hotspots out. But that's going to be a very important meeting, and certainly invite all of you and everybody in the county for firsthand information on that.
And I appreciate the CCA sponsoring that meeting. I've asked Michael Dombrowski to actually give a presentation down there, so it would be beneficial, and if we need to notice that meeting some way, if some of the other commissioners want to come, it'll be beneficial to understand what's been going out there. Michael Dombrowski's been the coastal engineer since ninety-five, I think. And so he understands the Cape, and he's done a lot of studies. DEP's funded the majority of those studies, and he's about to finish one now. So he'll have a lot of good information, and it'd be good for anyone that wants to.
He'll appreciate any of you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Anyone else? All right, before I ask for adjournment, let me just make a comment with Dr. Hardman. The sheriff and I had, were invited and went out, along with Representative Bashir's. And people, it's a shame our United States government earns it, earns it back to us. We've got a, Gulf County's got an issue out there, and it wouldn't take a hurricane. All it'd take is just high waves, and we could, we could lose some very bad state on there. Anyway, if you come out and let's, everybody support that. While I'm on the subject, I think it's the twenty-ninth of this month, when is our State Senator Monford and our State Representative Hollis and Bashir's? It's the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth at five o'clock.
Five o'clock here in this bedroom. So any of you, if you can, just write that date down and come back. The more the merrier. And if you have any views that you want to air before the senator and the representative, that's what they're here for. So having said that, anyone else? Last call.
Just, that's five o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth of September here, yes, that's correct. All right, I hear a motion to adjourn. First by Commissioner Macklemore, second by Commissioner Bryan, let's go. Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming out.